Story, but I.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. So nice to see you all here this evening. Welcome to the Ogden City Council meeting of January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're really excited to see all of you here. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present. And we're going to open today with a pledge of allegiance. I would love to ask the vice chair, Richie, to do so.
Yes. Please join me in standing and repeating the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't forget your name.
Heather.
I just got confused about. And please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you so much. We do have acknowledgements on the agenda. And first, I would love to read a little statement, just to remind everybody of the civility statement from the council. We certainly appreciate public comments and participation. We do request that an atmosphere of mutual respect and civility be maintained during our proceedings tonight. Elected officials, city staff, presenters, and citizens shall be dignified, respectful, and courteous during city council meetings. The council values all your opinions and points of view as long as they're presented in a civil manner. The council will not tolerate personal attacks, rudeness, disrespectful comments, insults, name-calling, or belittling comments. We desire to maintain an environment where everyone feels safe in expressing their opinions. Clapping, shouting, or booing during meetings is not permitted unless we are recognizing a group of people that's very exceptional and we say that we're going to do so. So, thank you. Any other acknowledgements from council members?
I would just like to, just an acknowledgement for those involved in the Martin Luther King Day celebration and honoring of Dr. King at the Marshall White Center, the breakfast for the Marshall, the Marshall White Center staff that put that on. It was a terrific event. A lot of great speakers, a lot of, a lot of good things were shared there. And so, anyway, just wanted to acknowledge, acknowledge all of those involved in that process.
Yeah, it looked like it was amazing. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there, but it looked like it was a great turnout. So awesome. Any other acknowledgements? Excuse me. Great. Well, up next, we have a recognition on the agenda for the Ogden High School Marching Band. And we've actually asked Vice Chair Richie to read that acknowledgement.
I had to arm wrestle Ben on this one, but.
Correct the record. If that were the case, I'd have won.
That, that's probably true. Former football player, and the reason I requested to do this is because I'm a former Ogden High School band member and actually former drum major when we got the marching band back going. That goes back to Mr. Barton, Mr. Webb, and Dick Monroe. Well, Dick Monroe was just before that. So, anyway, pretty awesome to see all of the success of the Ogden High School Marching Band. So, I'm going to read this proclamation, proclamation? What are we looking at?
Recognition.
Okay. The Ogden City Council and mayor proudly recognize the two thousand and twenty-two Ogden High School Marching Band for providing invaluable contributions to the Ogden community. Under the direction of band director Stan Renda, the Ogden High School Marching Band had a historic season in two thousand and twenty-two, going undefeated at every regular season, regular season competition in the three A division. The Tigers won first place at the Utah Music Educators Association Red Rocks State Marching Band Competition Championships, earning the top spot in every caption award, including color guard, percussion, visual performance, and musical performance. The marching band also competed in the Bands of America Grand National Championship and placed third in their division. In addition to their marching success this fall, ten students in the Ogden High Band Program have received, have qualified for the two thousand and twenty-three Utah All-State Band. We are proud of these students and Mr. Renda for the manner in which they have represented our community. Their work ethic, talent, and commitment have unified our residents and strengthened the sense of community pride in Ogden. Presented this day, seventeen January, two thousand and twenty-three.
So, we may clap now.
Yeah. Let me ask Mr. Renda to come forward and we put the whole band up here, maybe.
Well, we probably want a photo, right?
We want a photo.
We want a photo, yeah. Look at them. They wait for instruction. I mean, not every crowd has that, yeah.
Congratulations, Tigers.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Is it a host or is it a band there? Mr.?
Mr. Renda.
Oh, please come to the mic and make a statement. You all can go back and sit down.
Everyone, everyone roll step back to your, your seats. I don't want to see any head bouncing.
Amazing. How many people are in the marching band?
Uh, this year, we have eighty-one total.
Awesome.
We had some other obligations, but we had most of them here tonight, which we.
That's a lot.
It's quite a bit. It's grown a lot. So, um, thank you all very much for inviting us out again. I remember back in two thousand and nineteen, this is one of the highlights, really, of my career because I, I moved here from Alabama like ten years ago, and I eventually made myself a home over here. And I worked in Provo for four years, and my wife had been working at Ben Lomond High School for those four years as well, and lived in Salt Lake. We split that commute. I told her, like, whenever that Ogden High job comes up, and I know they have a marching band, let me know so I can get in there. I think I'd be a good fit. And luckily, my assumption was correct. These kids in Ogden, these Ogden High kids and the Ben Lomond kids, because we have a good, a good amount of Ben Lomond kids in our marching band as well, are just fantastic. I cannot speak more highly of their work ethic and dedication of what they put forth on the marching band field. And is just good, young people. I live three blocks away from the high school. I go to, like, I love Ogden's culture in general. And one of the things that I feel like is special about Ogden is that we really appreciate the arts. And as far as the socio-d dynamic that we have, it's, it's very diverse here in Ogden. In a lot of ways, it's very unique to the entire state. And that's exemplified in our schools and definitely within the marching band as well. It's really cool to see folks from all different backgrounds come together and work together for a common goal. Of course, we want to be the best marchers, the best musicians, the best color guard members, and everything in between. But there's a lot to learn about life through band. And I've, I've learned that from my band directors prior. It's the ability to have to work sometimes when you don't want to, sometimes when you're tired, sometimes when you're just burnt out or you're upset with someone. You still have to work together and make it, make it through. You have to lift each other up when someone's feeling down. You have to help each other out when you've made accidents or mistakes, and then work past that together. And every season is unique, and no matter what, you're going to find that happening within our band program here at Ogden High School. What's even better is, like, you can have all those great things. We can learn about each other. But it's, it is a competition. We want to work hard and, like, try to shine a positive light in our city. And our Ogden High School marching band members have certainly done that. We won the state championship back in two thousand and nineteen, came back, got third in two thousand and twenty, got first two thousand and twenty-one, and then first again this past season. And this is coming from a band program like less than ten years ago that was dead last in the state. Dead last, like one A through six A, lowest scoring band in the state. And that, that didn't matter. And luckily, the information that I gave them happened to be right, and they listened to me. And then they just wanted to work hard regardless, because sometimes, half the times, they don't listen to me. They just want to be good for themselves. But it was just, it, it's a really unique and amazing feeling to be that, that band director guy that they sometimes can like, sometimes kind of despise, but they understand that I'm, I'm working hard for them so they can get the best possible, like, result from it. Whether or not we're last place or first place, we worked together and made it happen. But it sure does feel nice to hear Ogden High School caption award, Ogden High School first place, Ogden High School first place. It's great to hear those, those positive things about our city and to show our state of Utah how amazing Ogden is. And this season was no different from the previous. I very much appreciate all of y'all's support. Our band kids are awesome. Even the ones that annoy me every now and then, they're pretty cool, too. But that's why I did it. I'm giving back the activity that, that gave me so much. And, like, my dad is a retired band director. He's actually flying in tomorrow because the All-State Band thing is this weekend at a Bravno Hall. So, if you guys want to see a free concert where the Utah Symphony plays in downtown Salt Lake City, seven o'clock this Saturday, you'll see ten of our Ogden High Band students there. But I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot from my dad. I've learned a lot from these students. And I, one thing I do know is that I do love Ogden. I love, I love what our students put out because I've never seen a group of harder workers ever. And I've worked in a lot of programs from the deep south all the way out here in the west. So, thank you guys very much again for inviting us out. I recognize our amazing Ogden High School Band students. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments from council or mayor? I'm not sure if you'd like to make a comment.
I, I just was going to real quick say thank you for pointing out the Ben Lomond students on there. I, I went to Ogden High. I graduated from Ogden High. All my kids have gone to Ben Lomond and graduated from Ben Lomond. So, like, we're both, we're all together here, and having the band, having those groups come together, that's, it's awesome. And I remember when I was in high school, there was always something special about band. You could, you could, you know, you could mix those cultures, and it seemed to mix a little easier than the football players over there. So, anyway, good job, guys.
Interesting. Okay. I'm glad I'm sitting here in the middle. Would you like to say something?
I would just say congratulations to all of you for everything that you've done. Ogden High gave my kids amazing opportunities. I'm extremely proud of how hard they work. And a huge thank you to the directors, the teachers, the administrators, and everyone else that provides these opportunities for our kids. It's a big deal, and we are exceedingly proud of you all. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to quickly say that you all work very hard and at very early hours. The, the, I, I'm not, I don't live far from Ogden High, and it just reverberates all over those mountains at, like, I think five thirty in the morning, I think, or something. I don't know. But you guys, it is just really fun to wake up to that sound. So, thank you for all you're doing.
I just want to address the comments of Councilmember Richie tonight. It's true, I would have won an arm wrestling contest, but as I often remind him, he's smarter and better looking, so I think, I think he, he still wins. But, you know, I, I really appreciated the band director's comments because I found myself, if you just close your eyes and just listen to the words that he said, it just reminded me a lot of the experiences I've had, and I've never been in band. I, I grew up, I had a great childhood, raised feral, a total knucklehead still, because I was a knucklehead when I was young. We didn't do band because we weren't smart enough and we weren't talented enough. So, yeah, I played sports. That was my pathway to where I am. I wish I had done what you guys did. I wish I had the talent that you guys have. I'd be a lot better now, and I might be smarter and better looking like Councilmember Richie, too. So, but it's just proof that these extracurricular activities, whether it's sports, whether it's band, whether it's chorus, whether it's whatever, it's all part of the educational experience. It's all part of becoming better people. It's all part of becoming a better Ogden and a better community. So, thanks for making Ogden better. I'm so happy to see that you guys are making yourselves so much better. And I especially love the high fives over here about the students that give you so much crap, so.
I have a, I have a quick question for the band director, if that's okay, if you don't mind coming back just a quick, I. So, I.
Make yourself at home.
You know, I grew up in Mexico. I, I graduated from high school in Mexico, and we don't have the same type of band programs there that we have here. And I'm just curious, so when, when you guys practice all year, you're, are you always practicing strictly to win your competitions? Does that help? Or not necessarily? No?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
So, what I usually put it to my students as is that the competitions is an aspect of it. We perform more for our community, more so than anything else. We have our school concerts.
Gotcha.
The parades and.
All right.
Competition's just the side of marching band, but we have the jazz band, the concert bands, the small combos that we have at the school that are other performance opportunities.
All right. Well, with that said, there's a really cool video on YouTube that I want to send to you someday. Of a, of a high school band in the United States playing a Mexican song. Others called Puño de Tierra.
Yeah.
It's a mariachi song. It's, it's become very famous and popular. So, someday, I'll send it to you.
Please do.
And if you don't mind, I'll even come and talk to you about it.
I, I would love that. Like, it's hard to find those transcriptions of mariachi music. So, if I can find one, I'll totally make these cuts by. I'm not going to like it, too.
I would love to come and talk to you about it. And then again, like, just like everyone else, this is very, very exciting. Congratulations, and thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you. Well, and you are certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the council meeting. We were here last week until eleven forty-five P. M. So, depending on when you need to go.
This is your signal for you to get up, just so you know.
Or you can stay if you'd like to, yeah.
Yeah, go out again is good.
Depends on when you have to get up and what.
Make it look full.
I think we could do, sorry to harp on this. I think we could draft up a recognition and send it to the school and give it and present it, and present it with them.
So fun. I love it. I mean, I'm kind of, so on our agenda for this evening, we did have a request to be on the agenda, the president, Mortensen, from Weaver State, but they've actually asked to reschedule. So, we'll be moving that agenda item. And then we have public hearings, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven, capital improvement plan amendment. And we have Chief Young here to present. He's trapped. Thanks so much. Oh, are you going first, Lisa? I'm sorry. I didn't have that note. I have you for the next item, but are you all going to do it together?
If it's okay, can we do both?
Sure.
Ordinances in one presentation?
Sounds good to me.
Three minutes? Okay.
No.
So, this is a request for a mid-year amendment to the CIP, the fiscal year twenty-three CIP ordinance. We don't do these very often. And this went to Planning Commission on November sixteenth. They voted eight to zero to approve it and forward it to city council for your consideration. I'll turn the time over to Chief Young to talk about the details of this project. This will allow the city to budget this CIP if you adopt this ordinance and, and so that they can move forward with, with the improvements.
Thanks, Lisa. And thank you, council members, again, for giving me some more time. I've seen quite a bit lately, and I appreciate that. This is an important project to us. I, I was able to speak with most of you at the work session last week about it. But just to remind you of some of the key points and why this is so important to us, Ogden City is one of three agencies in the state of Utah that have made a, a large investment to a VERTRA training system. A VERTRA is a almost three hundred and sixty-degree surround training environment with more than lifelike screens that interacts with an officer to deal with use-of-force situations, not only with a firearm that's simulated to be realistic, tasers, long guns, but it's really more about the interactions. It is, it's an interactive training in that it's another trained police officer who's actually operating the training scenario from a computer behind the system. And the way the officer interacts with those scenarios and the way they interact with the people determines how that scenario goes, sometimes based on the type of de-escalation skills they use, whether they recognize threats on both sides of them or not. It's going to change the way that, that it turns out. It's not each of them are going to turn out the same. It also allows us to do training on real-life situations. to turn out the same. It also allows us to do training on real-life situations, such as active shooters in schools or in public places. The system even allows us to go out and take videos of locations in our community and set up training scenarios on real-life situations like schools and other places in our community. And as I mentioned, it's one of three in the state of Utah. It was a large investment by the city several years ago. And it's been greatly beneficial to the police department. As I've bragged about several times, very close to fully staffed. And the investment in training like this is a big reason that we're nearly fully staffed, more than a few in the state, because officers appreciate the ability to be trained in this way. The other important item about this VERTRA training platform is the Attorney General's Office is also using the VERTRA platform. They're one of the other two in the state. And many of the new kind of trend-setting trainings that are being developed out of the Utah Attorney General's Office, like the autism training that all of our officers required to do, and duty to intervene training, which is being put together by the Utah Attorney General's Office, is being presented on the VERTRA as the format for that training. So when we purchased the VERTRA, I did a lot of work and a lot of research trying to find a place to put it that was close to the Ogden Police Department. And because of the dimensions of it and the necessary to have cooling and all these things, we struggled to find someplace close to our building. So we ended up partnering with the Weber County Shooting Complex to have it placed out there, which has worked and it's been good. But it's not as accessible to my peoples as it needs to be. I need them to be able to walk out of briefing as a squad and go down and do some trainings every day if need be. And with having it at our station, we can do that. So we've located a bay in our station that's currently being used as an overflow gym facility because we have such a small gym facility that we originally built, that we're going to remodel, fit our VERTRA that'll be right there inside of the Frankham Public Safety Building. We're going to expand our gym as part of that so we can put the critical and essential gym equipment that we need in the gym and actually have some floor space to do the type of exercises that are more common in today's fitness routines that you're doing on the floor, you know, doing Turkish get-ups. And, you know, a lot of different things aren't just on weight machines or barbells or things of that nature. So we need space in there to be able to do it the right way. We have a contracted fitness coordinator who also teaches some of our jiu-jitsu training, who will be there to help officers, make sure they're doing the right kind of training in that facility. Also, that facility services not just the police department, but the fire department and the dispatch center because we share that building. And it's woefully undersized to serve those three entities. So it kills two birds with one stone. And it keeps us on the cutting edge and being trend-setting in the way we do training here in Ogden City. So if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Questions?
No question. But just a comment. I enrolled in the Citizens Police Academy that was just held. We got a chance to work with that VERTRA system, and it was remarkable. I can tell why that is an attraction for recruits and really homes the skills of our officers. I needed therapy after I was done because it's so realistic. And I shot a civilian. So I didn't sleep very good for a couple of days. It is remarkable. And another thing that the chief didn't say directly, but it's really helping our officers work with autistic people and people that are maybe otherwise a challenge to work with. So I am grateful that you got this and that you're putting it to good use.
Yeah, I'm grateful you folks right here were able to get it for me. So you're part of it. And we've been working with Jean, as I mentioned last time, to get a time when we can get all of you out there to be interested, who haven't had the chance to participate or may not, you know, have all the time to commit to the Citizens Police Academy. We'd love to have you spend some time out there. And we have a lot of community groups participating as well. That's another benefit. I didn't mention is we do have community groups come out and get a real look at what it's like to deal with those situations. Some officers are put in our regular basis. And I big thanks to Lisa as well, who was up here, because as you notice, it's a mid-year change. It's a lot of work. And I greatly appreciate the financial department doing the work for us.
Any other questions or comments?
I was just gonna, if, it's okay. Chief, I was gonna, glad you got dug out of snow to make it back in time.
Good year.
Yeah, I was gonna actually say the same thing because I did the Citizens Academy before we had this system. And we did the virtual, like, SIM training, I think it was called.
Yeah, the SIMs are another type of training to do with the little kind of paintball.
It was amazing. I mean, I fail a lot in life. And like, I'm bad at a lot of things, but I don't think I could have been worse at SIM training.
Did you shoot a civilian?
Yeah, you two are quite a couple over there. I don't know.
I shot some of them all running across the room, and I was shooting from my head. I got hammered for that by the officers.
We'll get you back through it.
It might be a good thing for us to, if there's ever a time that we can be invited to use it, I think it'd be really good.
We'd love to.
I'd love to get that said. But I also, I'm curious, when you're explaining how you use it, can you use it so like, if there is a particular error or a particular thing that you're working on, you can really pinpoint those situations?
Absolutely.
So like a continuous improvement kind of tool?
Yeah. The whole training, the library of training scenarios are broad and categorized by certain types of situations. So it allows us to key in on certain situations. We also take every officer who's been involved, an officer involved shooting. And there's a whole process we go through where we do psychological evaluation and other things. But prior to returning them to regular duty, we put them through some scenarios and some stressful scenarios on the VERTRA just to make sure there's, as you mentioned, it's stressful. And obviously, a real one's tremendously stressful. So we want to ferret out if there's some other things that we need to work through with that officer before we get them back to regular duty on the streets. It's another, just a phenomenal opportunity to do.
Well, I definitely recommend to the public the Citizens Police Academy. I did that when I first got on council. I didn't participate in the virtual aspect. But when I was trying to arrest someone, I did miss several weapons. And yeah, it was a very touchy situation. I didn't mean that to be a pun, but it is a touchy situation.
More touchy.
I needed to be more touchy because I missed some stuff, yeah.
Because we didn't have the mayor last week. Got through him under the bus. And you have the example of him doing it at our ICP Academy, our ICP conference. And he goes in Chicago. And it's amazing how you see somebody go from zero to about 200 like that when you're putting, I mean, it's not a real gun. It's a real screen. It's images. But boy, even every officer hops in there. It's just, it's real life.
Yeah. Well, and just to understand the perspective of a person doing that job, I think it's so beneficial for all community members to understand, too.
Absolutely. Right. Thank you.
Any questions? Lisa? Sorry, we went over our three minutes.
Appreciate it, Chief Young. So the request is for council to adopt ordinance 2023-6, which would allow us to amend the fiscal year 23 CIP plan to include this VERTRA expansion for the Public Safety Building. In connection with that, we are proposing a budget opening that includes funding for this CIP, $437,000, and some additional budget actions. So I'll review those with you quickly. We're proposing to transfer $407,000 out of the general fund to the CIP fund. The $407,000 is the remaining balance of the management services budget from fiscal year '22 that was not spent. So if it is not transferred, it would simply be returned to fund balance. After the results of the fiscal year 2022 audit, the current fund balance, the unassigned fund balance over the 5% minimum, is sitting at about 22%. So there is absolutely room in that fund balance to take this money and move it to the CIP fund. We're proposing to transfer that into the CIP fund for facilities, along with $937,000 from BDO lease revenue, 500 of which, 500,000 of which, we put towards the fleet and the facilities improvement program. One of the things that they're working on right now and was part of their fiscal year '23 budget was a replacement of the public works building roof. And the bid came in much higher. So this would help cover that deficit in the bid. Additionally, when facilities puts that five-year plan together and we fund a year, she's estimating those costs. And costs have been going up. So this would help her cover that deficit and then fund some of the additional projects that she'd like to do. She has a big, long list. And we just go as far as we can down that list with the projects and the funding. And then put the $437,000 into the VERTRA project. You're okay. I don't remember my numbers. Additionally, we're asking to appropriate the same amount out of BDO lease revenue currently. There's, after this appropriation of 1.2, there would be about $300,000 left in the BDO fund. We're asking for the appropriation of $937,000, the $500,000 for facilities, the $437 for the VERTRA improvements, and then $300,000 that would be transferred to the redevelopment agency to fund the purchase, the down payment, and some soil remediation and due diligence costs associated with the purchase of the Union Station property. And then finally, in the fleet and facilities fund, we're asking for an appropriation of $1 million. This would be out of fund balance. It would be simply used as the backstop to preorder vehicles that have a long lead time. A good example of this is ambulances. They're taking over a year to build those. They'd like to order them now, but we need an additional appropriation to get them ordered. The cash outlay wouldn't happen until fiscal year '24. However, this would give them the ability to order and encumber those funds. And then about $213,000 in the sale of assets revenue, we're asking to appropriate back into the fleet replacement program. These are assets the city has owned and sold. Generally, we do it through govdeals.com. And when those revenues come back to the city, we ask to reappropriate them into the fleet replacement program. The total appropriation in this ordinance, 2023-1, is $4,201,250. Any questions? Thank you.
Chair, I have a question. Go ahead.
I was looking over there first. I apologize.
Yep, you're good.
I have two or three questions. And you probably answered it, but I was thinking about Councilmember Richie and what instrument you played. But what?
Saxophone.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice.
Did you say, and maybe, Chief, I'm sorry, maybe you said it. But are we leasing that facility right now from Weber?
No, we're fortunate. They're allowing us to use that space. We do get reimbursement from the Weber County Sheriff's Office, from their JAG grant funds, to be able to use our VERTRA. So the Weber Sports Complex has changed hands inside of the county from being a sheriff's asset to a parks and rec asset. And so we win the deal when it was kind of a sheriff's asset. And then parks and recs just continued to allow us to use it. And there's some benefit to them as well. And actually, just to mention, I have talked to the Sheriff Arbott about this, and they support having moved our facility and using it at our facility.
Okay. Can I ask my second question while I'm, it has to do with the RDA. And you explained it well in our work session. But one of the things that I noticed is that we're transferring money to the RDA when it's really not, Union Station isn't in a RDA designated area.
Correct. So the redevelopment agency has the ability to purchase land that is near to or conjoined with, that's probably the wrong word, other redevelopment areas. This is near the KESL Redevelopment Agency. The plan will be, as they progress with getting plans drawn up, to go and ask the county and the school district to participate in the redevelopment area with the city to help fund some of the improvements at the Union Station. When you think of the redevelopment agency, from a structure, we account for every area in an individual fund. That makes it easier for us to track the proper use of the TIF money. But it really could be just one fund. So it is very legal for us to use the KESL RDA for this purchase.
Thank you. I just wanted some transparency to that. Thanks.
I had just a quick question. Sorry. I wanted to wait till you got all the way over there. Sorry. Can you just go over, I just trying to better understand. So the audit with the 22%, the 5%, and how we got to that position? And was it based on other projects not being built out? Or was it overestimating? Just kind of help me understand that a little better.
So we can talk in a lot of detail during our work session about this. But just quickly, years ago, I don't know how many years ago that was, the council set a goal. We used to be barely at our 5%. And the council set a goal to get us to 10%. And that's sort of your rainy day fund. If something catastrophe, if a catastrophe happens, that's where you would go to fund, to fund.
This type of thing.
Exactly. So it's very, it's very healthy for a government to have a rainy day fund, that they have a place to go if an earthquake happened or something horrible. So it's probably been 10 years that we've been slowly building this fund balance. And the majority of it has come from being conservative on revenue projections. And then generally, every department will not exactly meet their budget. They'll come in a little bit under. So that goes back into fund balance when that happens.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Before Lisa sits down.
Sorry, Lisa. Just stay there. Just stay there.
Usually, numbers are boring, so.
Yeah. Yeah, amen. But unfortunately, they're critical in this one, my job. But the 22%, can you put a dollar amount to that?
It's about $16 million, a little over $16 million.
And then what is the, I can't remember the maximum that's in statute?
The minimum is 5%, and the maximum is 35%. However, that's a moving target because it's based on your revenue that year. So this year
It's a percent of your general.
We recognized our ARPA revenue, which pushed us way up. So in general, we're about $25 million lower in revenue. So it's a moving target.
You said 5% to 35%?
5% to 35%.
Okay, thanks.
It's where we can live. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just to bring her back one more time.
Lisa, no, just kidding.
Kidding, kidding. Just kidding.
I don't have any questions. So you can stay seated. But from somebody that was here when we were dwindling in the 5%, I can tell you, it's a lot better where we're at now. And it's a lot nicer.
You remember?
Oh, I remember.
You remember.
Yeah, I remember vividly. But yeah, I haven't gone through the training and had the mishap of shooting someone I wasn't supposed to shoot. But I did lose sleep over where our budget was. So we have, we have come a long way, which is neat.
Great. Well, if there's no more discussion, this is a public hearing. And because we heard both of those items at the same time, we'll just have one public hearing. So this public comment time will be for only these two items under the public hearing, 5A and B, the capital improvement plan amendment, and the Public Services and Public Safety Buildings, Union Station Budget Amendment for 2023. So you're welcome to step to the podium or raise your hand online if you'd like to make comment. You have three minutes to speak. And you just state your name for the record when you approach.
Hello. Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I, too, have been through the police academy. And it is, or Citizens Police Academy. And it is amazing. And the Sims Village thing is a real way to experience it. While I didn't shoot any civilians, I shot the bad guy. I got my bad guy. But it's imperative that we have that kind of resource because you have to, what fires together, wires together. And you have to practice under duress. And I can only imagine how bad it is for officers when it's really happening. Because when I was clearing a hallway in the hotel scenario, I had a Fitbit on, and my heart rate was 152. And I was completely safe. I had people upstairs. Instructors were there. I knew I couldn't hurt anybody with paint and a bullet. And so, I mean, it's imperative that we support our officers for that particular scenario. And so I highly encourage you to approve that. And this is the kind of thing that the public gets a return on investment. Every time we invest in our officers, we are investing in Ogden safety. And I would much prefer to invest in things like this than large developments and parking lots. Thank you.
Between people, just for the record, I got some bad guys, too.
Okay.
Welcome.
Did anything happen last week that I missed? Teresa Bramwell. I feel like I should go through the Citizens Police Academy. That might be very beneficial to me in the place where my property exists in Ogden City, which is on 25th and Monroe. I believe this could be a good resource if it results in more criminals being taken off the street, which is the problem we currently have in Ogden City. There are way too
So if this helps take the criminals off the street, I like it. I don't think it's the complete picture of what needs to happen to get the criminals off the streets. I think we need police on the streets to get the criminals off the streets, and we need police in the locations where the criminals exist. I've told you where they are. Thank you.
Anyone else in the chamber? We can move online to Carolyn L., and we'll just allow you to talk, and you can hit unmute. And can you hear me? Carolyn, looks like you're unmuted if you'd like to speak.
I'm trying to speak. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. State your name for the record, please.
Carolyn Litvininkas from Ogden. And I tend to echo Angel Castillo's comments. I'm, I'm sort of okay with local spending on, on things like that where it's a defined budget item and not a cost overrun, like the projects that you have ongoing with the Wonder Block situation. I'd like to give you a perspectives check at this point. You know, I was in Venezuela in 2001, just as Chavez was taking over, and it was a beautiful capitalist country. The people were friendly, business was thriving. There were very few homeless people in the city, looking great. And then Chavez took over. And over the next 12 years, I visited that country five times, and I saw the decline, the cultural decline, more homelessness, more crime, was actually involved in one. And it was all because of socialist and socialist and Marxist policy that stripped the rights of the people away, overfunded government, taxing the people into oblivion. And now these people down there in Venezuela are literally starving to death, eating their zoo animals. You don't think that can happen here? It can, that we're on that path. So I'd like to charge every one of you on the council to reevaluate what you think you know about what your job as a councilman entails. It's not going ahead and funding just every little whim that the city has, because we want all love to do that, but unfortunately, I don't get to steal the money from my fellow citizens to do it. Taxing is theft of the people's treasure. It's illegal, it's immoral, and paperwork is coming to inform you of it in a more official manner. I yield back.
Thank you. Any other comments online or in the chamber? I'm not seeing any movement. Would anyone like to close the public hearing? Oh, Linda just popped up. Sorry, Linda. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
My name's Linda. And I also am very happy about this, for the fact that we've had so many, we've had too many officer-involved shootings here in Ogden. You know, and I know that in situations, people think you can't, it's hard to predict what's going to happen, but I feel like any education that we can give to law enforcement officers is only an asset to us to help them to de-escalate, because sometimes I've even just been, even stopped, and I don't even, and I, I'm not involved in a lot of things, so I just don't understand processes. And I have had times where it's like, I'm just trying to understand the situation and there not being forthcoming of really what's happening, and I'm trying to be, to listen and to abide to what's going on. And I feel like these kind of situations, and any type of education with de-escalation, I mean, we all know that when we talk and we can let each other speak, generally, there's a better resolution than if somebody just tells you to obey, and you have no idea what they're really telling you or why, because you haven't done anything. And so I do, I do completely support that in any type of education and support for the officers that would help with de-escalation, because truly, we're all just people just trying to survive, and we have no idea what's going through each other's heads. And at the same time, I understand they need to be safe as well. So that is my comment with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Chair, I see no more.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Blair to close the public hearing. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair, just before we go on, I just got to notice, our Facebook post is really the...
Audio.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no. That happens when we try to do technical things. Any discussion on these items, or would anybody like to propose a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion then on ordinance 2023-6. I would make motion that we adopt that ordinance.
Second. I'm sorry. I have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember White to adopt ordinance 2023-6. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolsky?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Chabroka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you. Thanks so much, Chief.
Chair, I'd make a follow-up motion that we adopt ordinance 2023-1.
Taken.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember Lopez to adopt ordinance, proposed ordinance 2023-1. This is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolsky?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Chabroka?
Aye, and that passes as well. Thank you both so much. All right, next we have on the agenda, reports for administration, court parking, real estate purchase contract, and access easement agreement. I think we have, we need to see who's going to stand up, but we've got Brandon Cooper, the Director of Community Economic Development, and Mel Smith, our attorney.
Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate your time. Before you this evening is a Resolution 23, 2023-4, which approves a real estate purchase contract, thank you, between the agency, the redevelopment agency, and the state division of courts. The reason why you're hearing it as a council is because the city is actually party to the agreement as well, in the form of a guarantor, mostly because of the relationship between Ogden City and the redevelopment agency in terms of the sharing of employees and those kind of things. So I'll briefly cover the agreement here and also in the redevelopment agency meeting. So right now, the state owns about seven parcels. It's shown there on the map. It's also in your packet, described this way. These parcels constitute their parking lot on the west side of the District Court Building there between Lincoln and Grant. As you know, this is a, a portion of the Wonder Block development, and is needed to, to finalize the property acquisition and the plating of, of that project. And so the state has agreed to convey these parcels to the redevelopment agency with party by the city in terms of the long-term management and ownership, ensuring, although the RDA would, would be the recipient of title, again, the city and its role with the redevelopment agency has, has the long-term commitment for that as well. And so that's, again, why the, the city is actually a party to the agreement. This is a site plan for the Wonder Block, so you can see it's largely where the office is, as well as some of the east and west connection between Lincoln and, and Grant. In exchange for those seven parcels, the, the agency, again, with, with the city, would be conveying a perpetual right to 100 parking stalls for the use of the court's employees and customers in the east parking garage. And east parking garage is in that blue hashed area there, next to the bake shop and just north of the residential building. And so in exchange for their land, they would get the perpetual right to these 100 stalls. The 100 stalls would be separated and available between the hours of 7:30 and 5:30 for the use of the state court business. The commitment is also to ensure that they have a ongoing right for parking once that conveyance is made. And so there's an associated agreement as an exhibit to this repsee. It's a perpetual parking easement agreement, and that articulates the obligation that we would have to provide 97 parking stalls on Grant Avenue during the time of construction. These would be temporary. These would, again, be provided for the, the use of the court during construction of the Wonder Block. And then once Wonder Block was complete and the parking structure was occupiable, they would move into that, and Grant Avenue would be returned to its normal, normal use. The perpetual parking easement also stipulates what's to happen in the oncoming years. So over the next 50 years, the, the agency has the ability to rebuild a parking structure in similar fashion with the same amount of parking stalls, the 100 that's committed initially, as well as the, the other 100 that they have the right to purchase if their needs so demand. And so in the future, we have the right to either rebuild a parking garage with that 200-stall allotment, or we could choose to rebuild a smaller 100-stall garage if their need has declined and the state could, could terminate the agreement. And so we are trying to anticipate certainly over the next couple of decades there, what the future use of that state facility could be and should be, and that will change, but the, the agreement, again, is flexible to entertain their needs over time. This is a picture of what that Grant Avenue striping could look like. Again, it would be specifically for the purpose of the, the state court during those business hours. So our recommendation is to approve Resolution 2023-4, which authorizes the executive director to enter into the real estate purchase contract with the state court. Thank you.
We've got backup over there if we have questions, do you mind?
Yeah.
Any questions or conversation?
How will those stalls on Grant be monitored for state purposes versus private?
So we'll have to monitor that with parking enforcement, but there'll be signage. There'll probably be restriping of the road to accommodate some, a different stall configuration to get that number. But certainly signage and enforcement would be available.
I'm trying to, you know, wait the required time that you wait for people to silence in case any questions or conversations.
I think the required time is about when Lisa sits down.
Yeah, I can, I can go back and forth if that helps.
Yeah, we can't, oh, what, here she comes. Lisa, did you hear that joke? Oh, no, I was waving, and there was just a really awkward silence, and I said, I'm just trying to wait, you know, and I don't know if you want to re-say your joke.
I just said the right amount of time is about when you're ready.
Yeah, that way we wait. Anyway. Sorry.
I get it. I get it.
Okay, great. Well, if there's no more discussion, I'm happy to take a motion.
Chair, I would go ahead and make a motion that we adopt proposed Resolution 2023-4. Taken.
We have a motion by Councilmember Blair, with a second by Councilmember Hare to adopt proposed Resolution 2023-4. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolsky? Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Chabroka?
Aye. That passes. Would anybody like to make comment? Councilmember Lopez, would you like to make comment about your vote?
I would, aye.
That was me, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ben, I apologize.
But I can comment.
But anybody else can make a comment, too.
So...
Sorry. I was just keeping track of the numbers.
At some point, I'm going to get on board and support what needs to be done for the project to succeed, because that's what I want. That's what we need. I, I just want to make sure I'm clear on my questions and concerns on the project generally, and so I just kind of voted no for the, for the record, that's all.
Any other comments? Okay, great. Thanks so much, Brandon and Mel. Now we have time for public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council on any item. Just step to the podium or raise your hand online. State your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. I thought I'd just rip the band-aid off because I'm going to steal 30, or three minutes of your life, and if you want it back afterwards, you can blame this guy.
Oh, no worries. Would you mind stating your name for the record?
My name is Kristy McBride. I am the Division Manager for Ogden City Arts, Culture, and Events, which, as of August, includes Union Station. I want to thank you for this time, and I know that it's not a traditional manner in which a manager comes to report, but I was encouraged by Councilman Hare after his recent visit to Union Station. And so I'm going to take his advice and share a little positivity tonight. I understand that this forum is here for Ogden residents to have a voice, all of us, and I'm one of them. I was born here, I went to school here, I raised my kids here, I choose to live here, I choose to work here, and so I consider myself a very strong Ogden resident and a very strong Ogden voice. Lately, as I attend city council virtually and sometimes in person, I'm concerned about the negative energy surrounding the topic of Union Station. So I thought I'd share just a quick sneak peek into what is and has been happening at Union Station during the closure for our annual maintenance and cleaning. You all are coming on a tour next week, so we're excited about that, but I just wanted to share this publicly so that we can invite the public when we open tomorrow to come and see what we've been up to. No exhibits have been removed, to set the record straight. The reality is that there are three new gun displays in the Browning Museum that will be opened tomorrow for the very first time. And the Maintenance of Way, children's hands-on play area, will reopen to the public so kids can learn hands-on, again, for the first time since COVID. I have a report, and I only have 1 minute and 9 seconds left, but it was really hard to put all of this on one page, and this is everything that a very small team accomplished in 10 business days. This will be made public. We're going to share it with our volunteers tomorrow when they come back to volunteer for us, so that they can see what we've been up to while they were on a short break. It was 10 days, 21 workers, 241 project hours, 810 staff hours. Union Station matters to us. Union Station matters to us. During that same 10 days, we were able to write three grant grants for a total of $195,000 of ask to Weber County, one of those being for the Mercy Car Restoration. A couple more fun facts in my 23 seconds is our attendance in 2021, our admissions tracks it very carefully. We had 18,865 people buy a ticket to Union Station in Union Station museums. In 2022, 22,000, just a little over 22,100. That's an increase by 3,200 people. My ask is to come and visit us and do it from a place of kindness. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristi. We're looking forward to the tour as well. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Steve Jones, a Ogden resident. And I would like to, didn't plan on saying this tonight because I didn't know we were going to have Kristi McBride's report, but thank you, thank you very much for that effort. It makes a huge difference for everyone to hear what's happening and that we are making improvements. So, let's all work together and keep this going in that direction. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the best news I've had in a while.
Okay, state your name.
They opened up the Maintenance of Way. That was my hangout, you know?
Make sure you state your name for the record.
I'm Teresa Holmes, and said Union Station museums has been our goal. And we don't want them moved out of the station, and we also don't want the Echoes Rail Center gone. And I just have a really weird thing happening. Well, that's par for the course. But I tried to access the archivists, archives for Union Station for 2021 and '22, and I couldn't get past 2019, and I couldn't find anything out because I was trying to see, you know, how they did the deeds on the, everything that was donated and check out a few things just for the fun of it. So, if anybody in the group asks me any questions, they don't get misinformation.
Yeah, we can.
And also, we need the Echoes Rail Center saved. We don't want that gone, you know? And I decided not to picket for a while.
It's cold outside.
We got the internet, you know? So, anyway, I'm glad to hear that it's doing a little better. But when they go try to truck our stuff out, I mean, I got really attached to the, to our belongings in there. And I know a lot about them. And it just like, when they're talking about getting rid of the museums, you know, that was really, really tough for me because I, 7,000 hours, I've memorized everything in there, and then, you know, people act like it's nothing. Well, it's something to me, and it's worth fighting for. People love our museums, so let's keep them in the station. Maybe work around them with Wonder Block or something, but why do they have to go? That's our heritage. That's Weaver County's heritage, Ogden's heritage. This is us, you know? And if we let it go, we're done. And I don't really want to picket. I walk like crap.
Thank you.
I'd like to call you and get a hold of this.
Hi. Heath Sato, Ogden resident. It's good to see the, all the seats full. Haven't seen that in a while. I appreciate the work you guys are doing. I know you have a lot to review every week. The previous week, you, I looked at the number of pages of all the documents you guys had to review, and it was about the same number of pages as the average Bible. And this week is the Book of Mormon twice over, plus a little in length. So, I know you've got to go through a lot, and you've got to look through a lot. And I've been digging through the contracts myself that you'll be looking at tonight. And in my opinion, the deal is fiscally irresponsible, irresponsible. And the city should not agree to it as it is written. We're spending over $50 million on a parking deck with no competitive bids whatsoever. The builder is the developer. The, you know, it's under a different name, but it's the same company. I sincerely doubt any of you would have major work done on your home without getting a second opinion on how much it would cost. I've looked around with inflation. I mean, parking decks do cost a lot more than they used to, but I'm looking at numbers around like $35,000 of space, and we're going to be paying $47,000 per space. The numbers seem high, and I don't know if they are or not because we haven't gotten any competitive bids whatsoever. And, you know, for your home, it's your money. If you don't want to get another bid, fine, but this is our money. This is all our money. You guys have a lot of responsibility. And it's cost-plus, which means the more they spend, the more they earn. It's almost a negative incentive to look for good deals and save our money. I'd like to hear some real-world examples of when the city can start seeing a return on the project. The way I'm seeing it, it looks like, I don't know if we'll ever get to paying them completely off and seeing 20% internal returns year over year. And I'm very concerned about the office space. I'm looking at like, the end of last year in Salt Lake alone, they saw like a million square feet of office space open up. All through the state, even the governor's report says, "We're looking at different models now." And I think this is a bad time to invest in an old model. So, thanks for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Looks like we have one hand online if there's nobody else in the audience.
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I echo a lot of the sentiments that we've heard over and over, and I'd like to reiterate once again. I am not against developing downtown. I am not against dense, high density to have a better return on taxes, taxes in a downtown area. I get that 100%. What I do have a problem with is how everything has changed lately. And of all the people in this room today, both the people in the gallery and sitting up here, there are only two people that went to the Utah Economic Outlook Summit. I'm one, and Councilmember White is one. And Governor Cox was on fire because we're on fire. We have a housing problem like we've never seen before. And I highly encourage you to look at the data from that, which is available online. Governor Cox actually changed his remarks in the speech because he got that report an hour before he was supposed to give his speech. Governor Cox is allocating $150 million for the entire state for housing. Housing. How much are we spending on a parking deck and a development for office space that we don't know whether or not there's a need for it? And that your economic development director bragged that they're going to be the most expensive apartments in Ogden as a point of pride? I find that problematic. This is our tax money. Our leadership at the state level acknowledges that there is a problem, a big one. And we're, you're going to approve a development that doesn't even have 20% li tech? Not even 20%? So, you're signing on to gentrify an entire piece of real estate that no one is ever going to be able to afford unless they're at the top of our AMI. I have a problem with that. Governor Cox has a problem with that. You should have a problem with that. And I highly encourage you to call the mayor of Boise. I did. And their development, that this particular developer did, did not have an affordable housing component to it. And they pushed back, and they renegotiated, and they have one. I'd like you to stand up for the citizens of Ogden, your police, fire, first responders, teachers, hairdressers, people who make $53,000 or less that qualify for li tech. I'd like you to vote for them. Thank you.
Good evening, council. It's Stephen Van Wagner. Let's talk parks. I ask council and everyone in the chambers to shut your eyes for a moment, and let's picture, develop, let a picture develop in your mind. The world is in turmoil. Our country and Ogden has just gone through an event that caused long-term separation from family members, a health crisis, mental health issues, and even loss of life. The entire world has just gone through this turbulent time and still healing. During this forgotten time, the only places to gather were city parks to see familiar faces, build teams, and build back a sense of community. After this difficult time, the Ogden community, led by council members and the mayor, listened to the cry of their people for expanding park space, creating the largest impact on recreation in Ogden's history. What picture in point, what picture or point of time in your mind did you all have? Did it sound like the pandemic? I just described a period of time where our servicemen and women began to build back community after world wars. The priority at that time was leisure, swinging the old links and sipping on soda. The last time Ogden City made a major investment in parks, park acreage for recreation was 1908 to 1948. Our citizens were pleading for help to expand recreational space for baseball and golf. The mayor and council worked together and gave us El Monte Golf Course, Mount Ogden Golf Course, Mount Ogden Park, Fourth Street Baseball Complex, wasn't named that then, and others. It was the largest park expansion in Ogden history. We are just coming out of a generational battle with COVID pandemic. We are still healing. All of us have retooled the way we think about time and where we want to spend it. Like our forefathers, we are trying to build a community and build teams. Our citizens require more space. Embrace, embrace the courageous Ogden spirit by coming together, like other Ogden leaders did, to help us prioritize our people and provide more park space. Set the same prioritization, making space available for park space that we did for our citizens who love golf. I can tell you with confidence, parks, this issue is not going away. It's going to be part of this election cycle. It's going to be part of every election cycle going forward. And I make a long-term pledge with a commitment to the public to embrace initiatives for more public space, better parks, and destination open spaces with an increased accountability of every elected official serving Ogden. As of today, andparks.org has launched and committed, committed to the Ogden Parks Initiative until all park space has been secured by the city, city for the citizens' enjoyment from now through 2045. We're in it for the long haul. I hope you're all in it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Marissa Loving Foss. I'm a two-year resident of Ogden. I'm going to read a section from the Ogden City Master Plan regarding park space per the Ogden City Needs Analysis. Your needs analysis says we need 605 to 865 acres of open space currently by 2028. This should range 688 to 983 acres and that build out 735 to 10,050 acres of open space land needed. Where is this park, this land space coming from? Your needs analysis says that we are 20 acres short of park space in 2018, nine soccer fields deficient, one baseball field, and 14 public bathrooms in need of full replacement. And by 2023, this first 20-acre phase was to be implemented. How many additional acres has been added for new soccer fields since 2019 ordinance was adopted? Your needs analysis identified with an asterisk that the development of nine additional soccer fields would require 20 acres of land at a proposed price of $250,000 per acre. Are you aware that this current opportunity comes in at roughly $238,000 per acre? Land is never going to get less expensive in Ogden. Your needs analysis states that the city should be opportunistic and have long-term outlook, acquiring land when it is available and picking away at a small segment of the system until it's complete. Do Ogden School District surplus lands not meet these requirements? While ideally, the city would maintain their current level of service of 3.01 acres per thousand population as it moves forward, a decision has been made to keep the goal of maintaining a minimum LOS, which is level of service, of 2.0 acres per thousand population. May the citizens know who made that decision to decrease this quality of life measure? Did the people vote on this decision to decrease their land acreage per population? Was this decision by the Johnson administration? That being said, please visit www.parksandparks.org, excuse me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brock Loomis with Jay Fisher Companies. I just wanted to address one of the comments that was made earlier. So, we agree on the need for affordable housing. We are one of the largest affordable housing, specifically low-income tax credit housing li tech developers in the state. We currently have developed and own over 1,000 li tech units with another 300 currently in design. So, huge advocates of affordable housing. That doesn't negate the need for market-rate housing or catalytic development in Ogden City. Also, wanted to clarify, the project in Boise that was referred to was an affordable project from the day we first started working on it. It was never not an affordable project. It was never negotiated or renegotiated in any other way. It was affordable from the day we started, and it is being built as an affordable project today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can go online with Al Jones. Soon as we get you set up here, you can state your name for the record, and please only use three minutes.
My name is Al Jones. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm an Ogden resident, and I just want to chime in and everything about our support for doing Union Station correctly. I really want to, I'd like to see some heavy public involvement into the ideas and plans and everything so that this can be a real successful endeavor. I'm really excited for it. I'm, we're beating the Wonder Blood Red Project almost to death. I've commented multiple times on that and go back to previous meetings to see my comments on that. But I want to re, really pound home on Mr. Van Wagner's comments about parks and open space. I really encourage all of the city council to go out and see how many people use the parks, and not just that, but the trail system. The trail system here in Ogden is actually really a huge benefit for people to use and is in great need of expansion and, in some cases, some little additional maintenance and everything. I really, I, you know, I know that we're asking for a lot of money for a lot of these projects and everything of this nature, but these are investments in the future of Ogden that makes Ogden a fantastic place to live. And additional parks and additional trail systems will do nothing but encourage and drive people to actually want to come to Ogden to live and work and play and be part of our community. With that, I want to thank the city council for all that you do. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Sebastian, you're up next.
Sebastian, you're up next. Can you hear me? Sebastian, we can't hear you talking.
Oh, now, can you hear me now?
Yes, there you are. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you. Sebastian Benitez, from Ogden. Look like you are going early this night, not like the last, last meeting. I want to be clear about my opinion about Union Station and Wonder Block. Union Station people, fighting for Union Station, I can tell you and I can promise, Union Station will be a great. And they are going to rebuild a few offices and that will be nice. And be clear with you guys, Union Station will be a great and will continue being a mission in our city, for our state too. And I ask you, everyone on the city council, even in the, to the administration, I see my cobbler is there too, please, Wonder Block put in standby to the new election coming this year and to the new administration take care really clear, really transparent. Please take, put in standby till after the election. I, I think that will be the best for the city. If you decide to put in the ballot, please put in the ballot. Eight million dollars, 80 million dollars is too much money to make the city and there before the, the current mayor leave and leave that big there to the city. That is all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Amy Wicks, you're up next. You should be able to speak now.
Okay, sorry, yeah, sorry about that. I had to switch over to the speaker on my phone. So I'm Amy Wicks. I live in Ogden. And I would like to encourage the city council to look at all surplus school properties for parks and open space, land for open space in the future is only going to cost more, really. But, you know, unless we fail to address the issue with the Great Salt Lake and the looming toxic arsenic dust cloud takes over and there becomes inhabitable and our housing values plummet and, you know, if we fail to do something about the Great Salt Lake. Ogden City had a chance when I was last on the council for an open space bond initiative. Current administration dragged their feet and made that not a possibility. It was supposed to go on the ballot and because of their actions, not. So I would encourage the city council to invest in parks and open space to add fuel to Ogden's economic engine. Those types of things make our community a community of choice. Not spending $50 million on a lackluster development that we are indebted to for decades, where it's taking money from our coffers. We're having to make up those funds to cover the cost of public safety, sidewalks, streets, things at the municipal building, everything like those, the taxpayers of Ogden shoulder that burden. When you give those tax increment funds to developers, it means that the development's not paying its way. And with all of the apartments going in, I don't know if you've looked closely at them, but, you know, if I were a kid, I probably wouldn't be so enthused about living there. The one thing that does make those places maybe somewhat better for the families and single people and, you know, others living there is to have community open spaces nearby. And with the increase in population and pressure on our existing parks and open space, we're foolish to not invest in parks and open space when we have a chance, when the school district has surplus property. It's, it's a unique opportunity and if we don't take advantage of it, we're just foolish. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nathan Sutherland.
Hi, my name is Nathan Sutherland. I'm an Ogden resident. I'm going to echo Al Jones's and Steve Van Wagner's comments as well as say what I did last week. And when you type in Salt Lake for your destination, you should see Ogden. And the reason is, is because realistically, we're closer to any trails than the majority of Salt Lake. And we also have the Ogden River and the Weaver River. As a fisher, a business owner who sells fishing rods and guides on the Ogden River, I don't necessarily love the idea of tons of people fishing the river, but they should be because it's the best river in Utah. If we put money into things like parks, Union Station, trails up on the East Bench, we will be bringing a lot of people and people who are interested in buying in Ogden. And from there, the idea that developers and that Ogden should be putting its money into buying housing or trying to solve a housing crisis, I really think that this housing issue would solve itself and wouldn't be a concern in these meetings because we have what I believe to be one of the greatest outdoor recreation areas in Utah and love the Utah, possibly in the United States, maybe other than Alaska. Anyway, that's all I have to say today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. Any other comments? Comments from the mayor?
Sure, I appreciate everybody being here and their comments. I am going to push back on one thing. There was a comment said that the governor made comments about housing and was passionate and that he was. And one of the things he also talked about was not being bullied by an overly vocal minority, which sometimes happens in these types of meetings. I was asked by the Speaker of the House today to sit in on the opening session as an example of what is going on in terms of a dynamic approach to housing in Ogden City. We have 65% of the low to medium income housing in Ogden City in Weber County, and they called us out as having one of the more dynamic organizations to talk through that and to figure out problems and solutions to what's going on there. But that was a great honor. So any comments saying that we're not doing our part, we're not at the table, we're not taking this seriously are absolutely false. I just wanted to put some of that into perspective because that does not happen very often. So that's a reflection on our Economic Development Department, our CD group, and everyone at this table. And to say we're not working on that, I think discounts all the efforts that have been put into that. I'll end it with that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any council member comments?
Chair, I'd, I'd like to kind of weigh in a little bit on what the mayor had to say too. The, and tell a little story about some of our history that I think is relevant. I think we don't learn from our history, then we are doomed to repeat it. That's what, that's what history tells us. And when we developed the junction, we had a great master plan for that, for that development. And the developer that was, and I don't mean to throw them under the bus because I think it was a different time and there was different circumstances. But, but as it developed, as, as we put shovels on the ground, very often, the developer would come and petition that we would lower our standard. And so he didn't get what we, what we master planned for. We got, we got a good development in the end, but we didn't get what we master planned for. I was the chair of the planning commission, sitting right there. And I asked them one day, I says, how come you guys are always in here wanting to lower the standard of the development? And he was very frank. He said, let me tell you the way people decide where they're going to position themselves. They put a thumb tack in, in the, in the map, they draw a one-mile arc around there and they do a census track of how much money do people make in that, in that area? If they don't make enough money, they don't come. And he says, you guys don't have enough money being made within a one-mile radius of your downtown. So the fact that we've learned a lesson now and Brandon is, is saying, yeah, we're going to have some, people with some money in our downtown, that's only going to help. And to build on the mayor's point, to have nearly 70% of the affordable housing, and that's, that's a little bit of a deceiving term, but, you know, lots of different definitions for that. But according to West Front Regional Council's recent study, that's what we, we have, we have nearly, nearly 70% of the county's affordable housing, yet only 35% of the county's residents says that we really are doing our part. And I don't, I don't suggest that that number really ought to change a lot, but I, but I'm going to say if we continue to, to only focus on affordable housing, we're going to permanently impoverish our city. That isn't a smart strategy to continue to do that. We've got to get some people that's got some money that want to move here too. One good thing is last Monday, week from yesterday, WACOG, through a lot of encouragement from those of us from Ogden, passed a resolution to form a housing, a county master plan task force to develop a, a, a housing master plan throughout the whole county where it will find areas that will be able to be developed in a, in a smart, proactive way, not just be reactive to the markets and, and whatever whims happen to come down the, down the trail. But it, it will identify areas near arterials and collectors and city centers and, and places that it is smart. And, and keeping in mind to keep community identity and quality of life issues at the forefront so that those people that live there aren't sacrificing, aren't just going to be, you know, it's going to, it's going to develop in a smart way. That is designed, it is by that, that resolution, that plan should be formulated by the end of this year. And that should help inform the, the development in these individual communities, which will have to decide how they're going to, they're going to go ahead and do that. They also have some smart people willing to help them pro bono that will help them to build those, those plans. Because many of those smart plans don't have a planning staff like Ogden does, and so they need the help. And, and I think that's also being addressed at the state level so that gets, to get them some, some actual help. So I did get a pre-visit of the Union Station last Thursday. Of those of you, I got ahead of you guys somehow because I guess I can't make it when you guys can, but it is a remarkable treasure for the city. Thank you, Kristy, for, for giving us a voice to kind of, quote, damp down some of the, the hysteria that has risen up, which kind of does when there's no other voice. The Union Station is alive and well. It's being, it's being refurbished in a very healthy way. It looked like every wall had been, had a fresh coat of paint and all the carpets were cleaned and the, the exhibits were being painted and refurbished and, and even the, the little model railroads that are, I am in awe of, somebody was able to get in there and clean those. I don't know how they got in there to do that, but when you go, check to see how nice those are. That is a remarkable treasure. I got to see the, the gun collections. I got to see, I even got to get, get to go downstairs to see some of the stuff that's down there. And I need to say this, lest I, I'm sorry I've taken so long, but, you know, we heard a lot of comments about, you know, all of the collections aren't, aren't, they're able to be viewed. And I learned something about museums that I didn't know before. There's a lot of things that people donate and they just donate and, and I guess it's state law that requires us to keep that stuff for 10 years, whether it's worthy of anything or not. And so we have a whole bunch of stuff that's stored, that's stuff people have just kind of thrown in there and said, here, I'm going to donate this to you. It was valuable to somebody, but it may not have universal value. And so everything cannot be displayed, but our staff, and I, and I want to thank Kristy, Sam, and Hope, is that her name? That took me on that tour. Those were remarkable people that just really dedicate their hearts to, to that project. I hope we can, we can kind of put this argument that the city is, is, is dumping on Union Station to bed. I, I hope that goes away because it is clearly not the case.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just have a, a little bit of a follow-up. I was at that economic summit the other day and, and I, and we do have a very passionate and very forward-thinking governor. And I, I appreciate that our mayor was able to, to be down at, at the legislature and advocating for Ogden. Some of the things though, that, that came out of that too, that we don't talk about, and I think one of the things, it's really easy for us to get into just like this motive, we want parks or we want housing or we want this or we want that. I mean, we want, I continue to say that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And I know that that's a really hard thing for us to sometimes to think about. In the governor's budget, he put $100 million into helping us with a statewide trail network. Again, being able to facilitate a trail that goes from Ogden to Roy back down through the base and, you know, so just, just, we've got a lot on our plate and we've got a forward-thinking opportunity right now. And so we can't just look at it in, in silos. We have to look at parks and we have to look at housing. We have to, we have to figure out how to bring that all in the big puzzle together. And so affordable housing, housing, first-time homebuyers, I know that the governor put into his budget, first-time homebuyer opportunities. So I, I think a lot of this is going to get addressed. It's, it's just trying to figure out how that puzzle, it works and how it works for Ogden.
Any other comments?
Take a stab at some thoughts tonight. I got a call yesterday. I missed the phone call, but I had to respond with a text from the standard examiner. I think you're going to get the same call and Luis will too. I think the mayor already has. Say, hey, Ben, where you at? Are you running for reelection or not? And my answer was the same when I wrote Tim back, not planning on it, leaning heavily toward not running. And so I say that because it seems like every time we say something that we feel strongly about, we leave and there's some sort of a motive added to it. What's your, what's your motive? It's political. You have other aspirations. I don't have aspirations in politics. I have aspirations in finishing my tenure at the, at the end of this year and going back to serve in my career that I love so much. But before that year ends, I don't plan on punching it in for a year. I've got a commitment that I made and I've been saying it for a while. I, I hope, maybe it, maybe it'll make sense tonight, probably not. But the development at the Wonder Block is an amazing project. It's incredibly visionary. It's, it's what we need to strive for in Ogden, even more of them. The downtown plan, the Make Ogden Plan, it's incredibly inspiring for me when I see it. I see the potential of Ogden. When I hear Steve speak about open space, it's incredibly inspiring because I know the energy that he puts into parks and open space and coaching and youth recreation. When I hear you guys talk about the Union Station, I know how much you love and care about the Union Station. I don't know you on a personal level yet, but I'm starting to learn. I don't know you nearly as well as I know Kristy McBride, who is one of the finest people I have ever met, and I include her husband, Mike, in that too, who also works for the city. They work for the city because they care incredibly about Ogden. And so here we are, as council members, sitting here because we care incredibly about Ogden. We all love this place, right? Like I Like, I don't doubt that one bit. And so it's strange to be sitting in the same chambers every week, going through the same dang thing on something different every dang time, or sometimes the same thing. But the fact is, we've got a horrible relationship with each other right now. We're all friggin' pissed. We all hate the position that we're in, right? And we've got to get to a point where we're making investments in econ- oh, was that a bad word? Sorry, where I grew up, that wasn't a bad word. My apologies for breaking the rules, for my poor upbringing as well. We've got to get to a point where we can show that the Wonder Block project buys us open space, right? Wonder Block is going to bring us revenue, and Steve and team, we're going to answer your questions and needs and desires for open space and recreation. And it's going to set the template and the tone and the terms for the Union Station, and that the Union Station is the epicenter, right? And we need to do it in a way that honors the commitment of the volunteers who, she already left, honor their commitment in the past, because their commitment matters. They freaking put a lot of heart into it. And honors the work that our staff are doing, because they're here for all the right reasons. They're here because this is where they want to be. You know, that's the kind of Ogden that I envision. It's the kind of leadership that I am inspired to have, not the words "picket," "fight," "we're here to hold you accountable for the long term." Those are all things that are necessary right now because of this dynamic, of which I own part of it, frankly. What I'd like to see us get to is a point where we are providing for the daily kitchen table issue, is what I've been calling them forever. Almost every single day, I drop my kid off, or I coach my own kid in a sports program. That's a kitchen table issue for us. When we eat dinner, that's what we talk about. It's affecting our lives as a family right now. Open space is the same way. Union Station's the same way, right? We all have them. And those are all important. We can't do them all, like Marcia said, we can't do them all at once. We've got to find a way for citizens who come here out of pure love for our city, to serve the city and to make it better, feel that that's what they're doing, instead of feeling like they're coming here to fight. And it means setting clear expectations about timeline and what we can accomplish. It means connecting the dots between our economic development projects and the kitchen table issues that we have every day. It means honoring the work that's been done by our volunteers and by our staff. And it means giving each other the benefit of the doubt that we're here for the right reasons to do the right things. So at some point, I hope in the next year, I can set sail on this experience, feeling like we've accomplished some semblance of that. But in my opinion, that is the future for Ogden. It's the future of the next administration and the next council. It's what this city deserves and needs moving forward, and it, it is elusive at the moment. So I, that's what I'd like to work toward, and I hope we all would like to work toward that too.
Any other comments?
I was going to wait until the next meeting for comments, but I feel like the mood is right to kind of express my heart, what my heart is telling me to say. And I hope I don't take a lot of time. I'll do my best, try to hurry. So I just, about, about Wonder Block, I want to say that I had an opportunity to hear a lot of information directly from the developers, and I want to say thank you for all the information that you provided. That was very, very, very helpful to me. And I told Brandon that. I told him, "Brandon, I, I think that was very helpful to me." And I told him, "Thank you." And, and so I know we have more voting to do later about, about this, this project. But, you know, I, I, I don't know how cordy this sounds, but that's okay. It doesn't matter. But I, it feels like, it feels like it's political season, so it's open season. That's what it feels like. And, you know, I think a lot of people, or not a lot of people, or some people, I bet, that every single one of us that is sitting here on these chambers as council members have been asked a question if we, if we're planning on running for mayor, because it's obviously that, that time of year where that, where that's going to be open. And, and I've never had to do so much reflection about my answer, about that, than I had to do this time. And when I've been doing that reflection, what's weighted on my, on my reflection the most heavy has been my family. I always think about my kids, think about my, my wife and my kids, and my extended family, honestly, to be honest with you. And, and, and the more, the more that I think about it, the more I feel like I would not want to do that. I would not want to, I would not want to, want to do that job. And so for that today, today, I, I want to, I want to tell the mayor, thank you for, for, for being here, and for sacrificing a lot for, for Ogden. You know that I beat up on you sometimes, but I think I, I think you also know that I stand up for you sometimes, and that's my job. And, and I'll continue to do that, Mayor. You know, I'll, I'll try not to do it in public, but when I have to offer my constructive criticism, I'll do it the most polite and respectful way that I can. But today, today, I want to say thank you. Thank you for that. You, you deserve a lot of credit and a lot of praise for what you've done. So that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? I don't want to put you on the spot. I won't look. That's what I used to do in my class, right? Don't look at anybody.
Motion to adjourn.
Any other comments? Great. And I just wanted to say thank you to, to Brandon and the team, and also thank you to Kristy, if she's still over there. I appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to the tour, and I've already spent many hours talking to you all, so I really appreciate all that effort.
I'll second that motion too. Sorry.
A motion to adjourn?
Yes.
By Councilmember Hire, seconded by Councilmember Nadolsky, on favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And just so you all know, we're going to take about five to 10-minute break. We need to reset so that our audio on the Facebook feed will be fixed. So let's say we'll come back at about eight oh five, hopefully. Okay, so we'll have about a 10-minute recess before the next meeting.
I have a question.